And call the meeting. Or please, Josh.
All right, so this is our first budget workup. You know, really, really don't have a lot together, but we've got the numbers in here. So we're gonna just be kinda going through it. This is a process, obviously. We've got till June 1st for me to get my recommended budget to y'all by statute. So we'll work towards that date. But my goal today would be really to focus more on general fund. I don't know that we'll get through general fund today. But look at expenses on the general fund side. We'll do revenues later, but look at the expense side today on what is being requested from staff and myself. And I'm gonna let some of the staff members do their, present their budgets to you, what they're requesting. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and just roll into expenses, if that's okay?
I did, I did wanna say before we start, I'm gonna have to leave at about 9:10. So that's why I'm ducking out, sorry to do that.
So this is governing, governing board, expense side. We've got our salaries in here, forty-one thousand, social security tax and all that. These are all just kind of, they are what they are, right? For social security tax and salaries. Contingent education and training, we've got five thousand dollars in here for the board to do training in the upcoming year if they wish to. Sixty-five thousand dollars for, for legal, for the attorney fees. We have anything in here for other professional services. We have twenty-four thousand dollars in here for contract labor. That is gonna be, let's see what that is. That is gonna be for our recordings here from Gary and Sally. And then a convocation of ordinances at ten thousand dollars. Office supplies, we have at seven fifty. Boards and commissions, meeting expense, we have at five hundred. And then our contributions are at fifty-seven thousand currently. If you recall, we are going through a process with that. Right now, I've got everything lumped in there. We have not met to talk about those individual applications yet.
So when you flashed on that comment.
Yes.
I know in at least one year previous, we talked about putting the library, instead of separating library into a separate maintenance fund, just putting it in a regular budget. Are you thinking this is the way to go?
No, I think what the library, yes, I think they're one of those entities that we give money to that really has a amount of profit. So it's a little bit bigger than a contribution. So I would agree that needs to be moved to a different line.
To me, it's akin to the Center for the Arts. I mean, we own the building and we maintain it.
That's true.
Josh, can you scroll up so I can see the column? All the way up there. So, okay, thank you.
Now, this budget looks different than your last budget, so all right, it's a new system. We have different line items now. Lots, lots of things are broken down more individual. For example, a lot of these that you'll see here in a minute, especially on the salaries, everything is broken out more precise. I think that's just better for us on the accounting side. Admin. So this will be myself and this department would include the town manager, town clerk, project manager. This also has the new position of communications officer as well.
How much is that one?
The total for that's eighty-five thousand. We factor in everything. Don't have any part-time salaries in here. I, I actually considered putting in an intern, but I've since cut that out. We have holiday pay in here, this is what I was mentioning about us breaking this down to be more precise. Holiday pay, we have longevity pay, we have auto allowance, that's mine. Social security, retirement contributions for state, retirement contributions for 401K. This is our insurance line for our medical and life insurance. We have five hundred dollars for uniforms this year. Professional licenses and certifications and dues, this is eleven thousand three hundred. That is gonna be the organizations that we're part of, whether that be, excuse me, city managers, legal municipalities, all the things that we pay dues to, at least for, out of administration. Education and training, we have fourteen thousand eight hundred. That's a fairly substantial number, but we do a lot of training in my department. We are always out taking classes.
Is column N the current budget?
No, column P is our current activity.
Okay, the current activity?
Yes.
And M is the budget, okay.
M is last year's budget. I don't, this year's budget is not in there, is not shown.
So the twenty-three budget is?
It's not shown.
Okay.
Um.
Why is that? Why is lead other than do?
We are still trying to enter that budget into our system currently with our new software. That is why that's not in there right now.
Is it possible to have that for next week's meeting?
I doubt it, but maybe. Fourteen eight, where are we? Right here, okay, that's trapped, that is education, excuse me, educational training. Then we have supplies at two fifty. We have travel and per diem at three thousand. Now, the per diem and travel is mileage, hotel stay, you know, food, that sort of thing. Professional services, engineering and design. This is for eight thousand dollars. This is for miscellaneous studies of different types that we do throughout the year. That could be a traffic study, it could be intersection study, a number of different things that it could be. Forty thousand dollars for other technical services. This is the facilities needs assessment that we talked about during our retreat. This is, if you recall, the last time, whenever we did, earlier this year, we did our salary study. If you remember, the gentleman that was here talked about doing like a little bit every year to make sure we were staying up to date. So I have three thousand dollars in here for that, to update that. Also have firework expense in here, which is, has creeped up on us every single year. Fourteen thousand dollars for fireworks is what we paid.
And the label there is vendor services?
It's under, it's under contract labor right now. Now, let's see. This is for cleaning services, cleaning services, we have eleven thousand nine hundred. And this is what we, what we end up paying for folks to clean this building, also for mats, for the mats you have when you come in. Just essentially floor waxing, just all kinds of different things. Thousand dollars we have for printing and binding, it's typically what we use to put together and bind the budget. Advertising and notices, we have five thousand dollars in here for that. Contract maintenance services, we have forty-eight hundred, which is pest control, shredding, fire extinguisher inspections. Ninety-three hundred for bank service charges. Bank service charges and fees.
Is that credit cards?
Credit cards, and this is what we pay, we're standing, is that correct, Danny? This is bank service charges and fees. Essentially to hold our money. Technology license, this is for public record software that we pay, that we have to pay every year. Utilities, they kind of, not a lot of wiggle room on utilities. For electricity, we have refuse disposal, that's for dumpsters. Communication, of course, phones, water and sewer. R and M building, I have twenty-one thousand in here. Fifteen thousand of that is for painting the inside of this building.
So all these that were marked zero in twenty twenty-two, we just didn't break them down?
This, this goes, yeah, this goes back to that, what I've mentioned about this budget is completely different than the last budget. So these lines didn't exist in the last budget.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Once we get to next year, it'll flow, it'll, it'll all be much easier because everything will be in this same format, if that makes sense. R and M equipment, we have two thousand dollars in case something breaks. HVAC units, things of that nature here. We don't have a town vehicle or for admin, so we have no money there. Supplies and materials line, that's something that's been changed from previous budgets, so now it's going into different lines. Office supplies is five thousand dollars. Janitorial supplies, twenty-five hundred. Technology supplies and materials, thirty-four hundred. Non-capital equipment and furniture, this is for forty-five hundred for a bookshelf. Very expensive, that's only a part of that fee, that's not the whole, that's not the whole amount for forty-five hundred. Sixty-one hundred is gonna be for Citizens Academy. Fifteen hundred dollars for retirements and a thousand for miscellaneous expense. This is our leases, so copier lease is the big one in this, in this line. Lease rental building and land, we have two thousand dollars, this is for our lease from the railroad for the parking spaces on Southern Avenue. So those parking spaces that are parallel parking on Southern, that's in the river right away, so we have to pay their money for that. And that's not anything new, we've all, we've done that for years, but it just probably wasn't as apparent to you in the past.
And that's not a fee that's gone up?
That's not, no, that's, yeah, that's, that's not. Thirty-three hundred dollars in here for postage. Boards and commission expense, five hundred dollars. Safety and compliance, seventeen fifty. Miscellaneous, miscellaneous expense, a thousand dollars. We always have a contingency line, and we'll have a contingency line in general fund and in water fund. And these are for things, unforeseen things that may pop up. Twenty-five thousand dollars is typically what we do for that line, that's not an increase. Capital outlay, ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars. This is, this includes the decision that council made, I guess, a couple meetings ago about our AV chambers. So that is included in here at seventy-seven thousand five hundred. And the other expense is for the EV charging station right out here, which is, is, is on its last leg. It needs to be replaced, and the cost to replace in that is fifteen thousand dollars.
Where is it, which, where is that?
This is the one right here adjacent to the chamber.
And the, we don't charge for those currently?
We currently do not charge, we could charge for that one. We cannot charge for the two new ones we put in because they're grant funded.
Five years, I think?
After five years, we can. So those two we could not charge for, we could charge for this one, but we haven't ever done that.
Do we have that on?
What we pay? We do, it's fairly minimal, it's about a thousand dollars a year or so.
And do we have that on how many hours of charging?
We could get that rolling down.
I'd like to see it.
And that is it for the admin budget. Six hundred and fifty thousand five seventy-five is what that is totaling up to. Human resources, this, you know, this is one that did not exist in the past. Everything was rolled into an admin, to the admin side. So we've broken out HR to be more, I guess, really, just to be able to better account for the money and kind of show y'all what, what this department is doing. There's gonna be some, some new things in here that I'll go over in a minute that I, I think are gonna be great if we can make them happen. Salaries, fifty-four five is what we're projecting for next year. Holiday pay, twenty-eight hundred, longevity, three hundred. We have FICA at forty-five hundred. Employer contribution, ten-five, 401K, twenty-eight hundred, and our insurance, ninety-one hundred.
Can, can you remind me what the town, what are obligations on the retirement? I know we have two different things we contribute to.
Sure, I'm gonna mention 401K, I'll let Danny talk about state. 401K, we give, we do five percent for every employee, regardless if they put in anything.
It's not a match, it's just?
We put it in regardless if they put in anything. And that is not common, but that is a benefit that we have here for our employees. A lot of folks will make you match what we put in. But we have not, we have not done that, I don't remember, we've never done that. Since I've been here, we've not done that.
And you've always done five percent?
We've always done five percent.
And then, Danny, what is, what's the, I mean, what's the rough formula?
State retirement, the town has to, you know, you see that, boys and the law enforcement is not changing, it's not free, I think, for that. But that includes, since we're all state health plan, retirees, continuing to, that's what it rolled into. That'd be, that's the state policy, so that, we can't change that.
Now, I, yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
What, do you have any idea what other municipalities do on the four or five?
Um, like I mentioned, you know, here in this county, I don't have a good grasp of what everybody's doing. I can do some research pretty quickly. I will say, other places I've worked, I've seen it done both ways, where they just put in an amount, or they make you match it. So if they want, if you wanna, you could get up to five some places if, if you put five in. Or you can, you know, get up to three if you put three in. So I think there's a bunch of different ways to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd just be interested in that.
Sure.
What others are doing.
State unemployment insur, state unemployment insurance, two thousand dollars. Workers' comp insurance, this has went up a little bit, we're projecting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that. And that's due to some, some workers' comp claims we've had. Twelve hundred dollars for employee benefit administration expense. Medical and other required testing, this is drug testing for new employees, most of that is. Six thousand dollars employee appreciation expense, we have at twelve-five, and this is an increase. I'll tell you why. What we're wanting to focus on this year is, is trying to keep the employees we have, all right? We know that getting new employees isn't easy right now, and I think every single sector is still in that struggle. So we, this year, have decided to do quite a bit of things for existing employees, like health fairs, safety days, picnics, things of that nature, lunch and learns. We think that that, we've done some lunch and learns this year, and we have gotten nothing but positive responses from that. And people really enjoy that. And they range from stress management to dieting to just the whole gamut of things. And that is something that I think we as a town and probably lots of other towns have failed to focus on. But I think with, with COVID and the way everything is, this has been much more important to focus on. And I think that's, that's just, that's brought up to light, at least for me and staff here. So the twelve-five is gonna include five thousand for holiday lunch, four thousand for employee appreciation day, one thousand dollars for new employee swag, which would be gifts or whatnot, little black mountain cups, black mountain pins, whatever it might be. And then two, two thousand five hundred dollars for employee picnic. Wellness program expense, you'll see this is big, this is a big number as well. Twenty-two thousand five hundred, that is for lunch and learns, we're gonna do, we wanna do nine of those. I've got maybe reducing here, and a health fair at six thousand dollars. We have done health fairs here in the past, it has been seven or eight years since we've done one, but we have done one before. Certifications.
On the lunch and learn, the expense is just for the lunches, basically?
For the lunches and for, for, to pay the people to come do it for us. That's not something we do in-house, we, we usually have someone come in and provide that training for us, going through those, it's meditation exercises or dieting or whatever it may be. Licenses, certifications and dues, five hundred dollars. Forty-five hundred dollars is for continuing education and training. Now, as you see, we haven't spent very much in that line. They want, they wanna do quite a bit of things this year, as far as training goes. Employee travel and per diem, fifteen hundred. Tuition reimbursement at five thousand dollars. We've done, we haven't reimbursed anybody this year, no one's went to school. So I'd like to keep some money in that line, just in case someone does go to school. We push that to employees and, and they know that if they go to school, we do, we do reimburse them some expense on those school expenses. The year before last, we did quite a bit in that line, but this year we just haven't done, no one's been.
Any employees, not just this department?
Yes, there's a beginning employees, yes.
Is that a percentage of the expenses that we give, or?
So without looking at that form specifically, Doug, I'm, I'm trying to recall, you know, they take classes, they have to make a certain grade. They make that certain grade, then we reimburse up to a certain amount. I think it's about a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars per employee per year. That's what our staff do.
And it has to be applicable to this job?
Yes, if, if they were working as a fireman and went and took a class on culinary, then that, that wouldn't be applicable.
Although the firefighters, they enjoy that.
Well, that's, may not, may not, that's a good, that's a good example, they are, they, they do go on a culinary stuff.
So the difference here between continuing education and tuition reimbursement would be tuition has to be degree seeking or ongoing?
No, that's, that's really what more, more people know. We do also have some legal fees in this one, and I actually cut that, they wanted fourteen, I cut it to six. This would be for any kind of HR related legal issues we run into. We do have a contract with Robertson Stephens, we do use them on occasion for certain issues that come up for HR.
No, that's ongoing after we fire the new employee.
Yeah, the new attorney really is, I think the whole HR side is what it's after.
That's a pretty significant cut to what they requested.
Yeah, it is. Trying to save as much money as I can, but yes, it is.
I agree.
Twenty-five hundred dollars for advertising and notices, this is for job ads. Miscellaneous for two thousand and five hundred dollars for the big municipalities' job ads. You know, depending on how, how bad the situation is, we use whatever formats or media we can use to get jobs out there. Sometimes we have to pay more money, and then some of those, some of those websites charging per day, we have used some of those in the past. Technology, let's see, office supplies at a thousand dollars, technology supplies and materials at five thousand. This is for a new computer and ID machine. So the little IDs that we make, that machine we have is on its last leg. Volunteer cadet reserve expense at fifteen hundred. Non-capital equipment and furniture, we have four thousand dollars in here for picnic tables, I cut that to two thousand. I think originally we were gonna do four, and we decided just to do two, or I've decided to do two, to save some money. Liability and property insurance expense, a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. This also does include supplemental insurance. So liability insurance is, we have that through the league, that's all, the buildings, all that, you know, everything as far as that's concerned. Supplemental insurance, the health insurance will be, vision, dental, short term, just that, that sort of thing. Definitely do every year, something to do. The total for this one's four forty-one, six thirty-five. This is our finance, for our finance department, this will be the three people in finance department. Salaries at one forty-one, nine. I probably should have mentioned to you, to, to, just to you at the beginning, these salaries include a five percent cost of living interest. Current?
All of them.
All of them, part-time too, everybody's getting five percent. Talking to the other, some of the other municipalities here in the county, they are doing, all of those are doing at least six. I talked to the county manager last night, she is looking at her salary. So you have your holiday pay in here, seventy-five hundred, you have longevity at six hundred, you have FICA, eleven-two. State retirement, twenty-seven-one, 401K, seventy-six hundred. The medical insurance, twenty-three hundred. Professional licenses and dues at two fifty. Continuing education and training at five thousand, per diem at five thousand. Professional services, actuary fees, this is the audit, it's what we pay the auditors, thirty-five thousand. We don't have anything in here for advertising and notices. We have permits, licenses and fees at five hundred dollars. Tax billing and collection fees at one-ten, that is a hundred and ten thousand, excuse me, that's what the county charges us to do our tax collections. They do our tax collections for us. Just so you know, that tax collection rate is about ninety-nine point nine-five percent, thirty, if you got higher, most of the most, a hundred percent, which is really, really good. This would be profit tax.
That's the fee we pay, yeah.
Correct. That's correct. And they, I would suspect that they probably do the majority, if not all, of the towns for tax collections.
Yeah.
Technology and software license at ninety thousand dollars, that is our, our license for our financial software. Cell phone stipend at a thousand, R and M building, we don't have any money in this line. Office supplies, we have thirty-five hundred. Technology supplies and materials at fifteen hundred. Non-capital equipment and furniture at five hundred. Miscellaneous at five hundred, and that is it for this department, which is four seventy-one, six fifty. Information technology, this is IT. So this one's gonna really include what we're paying for our IT services. Ninety-five thousand dollars, this is what we pay to advance data for our IT services, as well as our Microsoft Office licenses. We have ten thousand dollars for contract labor, that would be for maybe some project that we may need to do during the year that would deal with IT. As you may or may not know, IT is not cheap. Technology and software license, we have eighty-six hundred in here, that is for Civic Plus. I do, I need to add Adobe, but that actually has been put somewhere different. That is for Civic Plus, that's our website. Twenty-three, five, eighty, this is for our phones. So our, our new phone system is all voice over IP, that is through advanced data as well. And that is a separate cost just broken out, but that's what we pay for our phones yearly, for our voice over IP phones. Nothing.
What is the, like, what do we get for that eighty-six hundred and plus eight fees?
Well, that's, that's what Civic Plus is gonna charge you to use their name, that's what they're gonna charge you to do different upgrades that you need to do at times.
That's, that's essentially the hosting fee, you know, and then they also, you know, they do offer some support for that fee as well. They, they don't get into a lot of like content editing for that, but they will help you troubleshoot if you need it. That also includes a refresh every three years, I think, like what we're going through right now.
Then I have nothing.
Who does the content edit?
I do, I do content, that's the name of the website.
R and M equipment and technology supplies and materials, I don't have anything in there. One thirty-seven, two forty. Public and non-department areas. All right, so this, this is where our electric vehicle chargers are. Twenty-one hundred dollars is what we pay for the electricity, R and M buildings, I don't have anything in here for that, for that line, nothing for?
Just to be clear on the chargers, that's just for the one charger that we're, the one, the new ones at the library. Like you said, what's the twenty-one hundred?
Twenty-one hundred dollars pays for the expense for the library, electricity handling, like, at the pool.
Two, Eddie, right, two stations at each.
One station to, to, to charge, yes.
So we don't, so we don't ask the holder to pay on that?
We, we don't, Mayor Sobel, those we cannot because they're grant funded, we have to wait five years to be able to charge. Now, the other one down here that we've had for a long time, we do not charge, but we can. And that one's gotta be replaced.
Are all three charging stations twenty-one hundred?
The, these are the two, the other charging station is a thousand, they're about a thousand dollars a year, so what we pay for?
I mean, where does it, where does it show up in the budget?
This is the twenty-one hundred for those two charging stations, that's correct. The other one shows up in admin. I have nothing for capital land improvements. Now, we have debt payments in here for this line, debt payments would be for Black Mountain Avenue, the building. Now, that's split between general fund and water fund. Three or four Black Mountain Avenue building, and then we got a town square. three or four Black Mountain Avenue building, and then we got town square debt. And I think Courtney was telling me yesterday, we have, I think, three more years? So that'll be rolling off in about four years. Then you have this large transfer out number, that is the number that we transfer out to balance fire department, planning departments, stormwater. Because those accounts themselves do not make enough revenue to operate.
Police, fire, stormwater?
Planning. That total is one million eight twenty-four, four hundred.
Can, can you explain that transfer out?
So, so the fire department, let's use the fire department fund for example. So our fire department special revenue fund is composed of fire district tax money, which comes from the county. So that has to be split out separately, that has to go into its own fund. So that ends up being about one point five billion dollars roughly, is what this year is for that, for that ad lorum and sales tax for these funds in fire district. Just that money alone, obviously, is enough to operate our whole department, because that's only the county expense. So we have to put in the money from the town side to cover the rest of whatever their expenses are.
So that's what that is?
That's what that is.
Alright.
Planning is the same way, the planning fund includes building inspection revenues, that has to be accounted, accounted for in that fund, can't be used in any other fund, just like, just like the fire department. That, the building inspection revenues do not cover the cost of running the plan for, that's always sure. And then stormwater, now that's, that's a new fund, I think last year we only appropriated about, it was very minimal on what we had to put in there. And not to get too, not to confuse you, but quite a few of these departments have allocations on the salary side. For example, I don't only do working admin, I do work in about every department, I'm touching something, so we have to try to allocate those funds out, spread out. Alright, we're on police, so I'm gonna let Mr. Steve Parker come up and talk to you about this budget.
Morning. So Josh is driving the train, so. So we, for the budget, we've put in two police, additional police officers. We also budgeted for, which I had spoke, spoke about earlier, I spoke about the career ladder and doing away with the incentive program, which we currently have, and moving to a career ladder succession program. And so those have also been put in this as well. That basically was a wash, just so you know, that wasn't any additional expense, it was just changing the way we operate. We've put in twenty-five thousand dollars for overtime costs. The struggle that we've been having, which is a constant struggle, is we're not able to get reserves into workforce. And the ones that do workforce right now, currently, they haven't completed all of the policy review, as well as they don't even know how to operate our computers, so they can't even do a report or write a ticket. So kind of, that's one of those learning curves, and some of them may or may not want to because they've been retired out for a while. But they're great for parades, they do help us with parades and different things like that. So this is, the overtime is to try to get staff in, as well as also help us with some of the training issues that we have. We're required to go to a ton of training, the state requires us twelve classes minimum, and then there's a ton of training with the accreditation, so that's what that's for. Then the rest is just broke down, that's like Josh said, those are just slowly broke down. You have the 401K, the retirement contribution, social security, separation allowance, and then you go into our medical and other required testing, that's thirty-five hundred. So every applicant that applies with us has to go through a psychological background test, drug screening, different requirements from the state, so that's what that expense or that line item is. We felt like we could probably keep it to where it's at right now, hopefully we don't lose a bunch of employees and that doesn't boost up, but that's kind of what that's for. We have the employee appreciation expense. From day one, I've talked about retention, retention, retention. This is, we've started a couple new programs, one, we have a employee of the month program that we're doing something for, as well as we have a unit of the quarter that we're trying to recognize for doing something good, whether it's save a life, prevent a burglary, whatever it might be. This is us trying to invest in our employees, and so that's what that expense is. Yes, sir.
What is the LBO separation allowance expense?
Yep, so that's, the state has a local law enforcement retirement expense, so it's separate from the regular state retirement, so it's.
Basically a retirement for law enforcement.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uniforms, twenty-six thousand, that's, we're, didn't recommend any change in that, that's the same from last year. Protective clothing, we have it five hundred dollars. That can be anywhere from, I know we just purchased, and it's not even showing on there, we just purchased the masks to do CPR, where everybody can do the CPR if they need to without touching, so that's kind of what that line item is. No change in the protective clothing recommendation. Professional licenses and certifications, this is to do with ICP, FBI, N A, state licensing and dues, so there's no uptick in that, no recommendation or uptick in that as well. Employee education and training, eleven thousand dollars, no uptick in that, that's the same recommended budget as last year. Although we do think, you know, if we do add a couple of employees, it might, might uptick a little bit, but I think that, I think we're where we need to be right now with that, I don't, I don't see any recommendation to go any higher. Supplies and training at five thousand, that's the same as last year. And then employee per diem and travel, twelve thousand. That's just a slight uptick, and I did the slight uptick equation with, hopefully based on two new employees. Information technology services, this is sixty-eight thousand, and this is one of those new line items that we talked about, and I think if you, that's gonna be, so one of the negotiations that has been going on for a while since I've gotten here, is we were paying PSAP, which that is for dispatch services. Dispatch services, when I first got here, was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. We've negotiated that to where we're not going to pay any PSAP services this year, so that number will be zero. And what the county's negotiated with us is we're gonna be paying PSIP, I know this is very confusing, and that is for IT services, but as you can see, as opposed to a hundred and sixty-eight, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, we're looking at sixty-eight thousand as that budget, so that's going to be for mostly our software services that we utilize with the county CAD, RMS, different things like that. So that's gonna be for the support of their services to make sure we're, we're on the same software. So that's basically what that is looking at. Then you have over contract labor services, thirty-four thousand is for animal control, so we've been paying that to the county. I, I know it's been ongoing for some years, I know since I got here it was going on, but that's, if we have anything, the county comes out and assists us with any animal control services that we have. Then you can see the contract service dispatch, it said eighty-seven last year, but it was actually, I think, one forty-three, and we zeroed it out, it was one forty-three, it went from one sixty-eight, one forty-three, and then this year zeroed out. Cleaning services, sixty-four hundred. That's basically matching, you can see the expenses were at fifty-two, we expect we'll probably be at sixty-four. Contract maintenance service, two hundred, that's just a small, slight fee, nothing uptick in that. Forty-one thousand for technology and software services, so that's like our power DMS that we're required for accreditation. The benchmark software service that I've talked about for early warning intervention, different software companies and vendors that we have to use to operate as a law enforcement agency is basically what those are. And usually those are annual licensing fees, so that increase is usually three percent a year, is what most software companies give back to us as we go on, but that's what that is, and there's no uptick in that. Electricity, ninety-seven hundred, no uptick, utilities and gas, that's for, for the actual building costs, eleven hundred. Communications, that is twenty-four thousand right now. What that is, is for our, like, Wi-Fi boxes that are in the vehicles, phones, different things that we utilize for communications, and, and there's no uptick in that as well. We feel like that's, that's a pretty online with where we need to be. Water and sewer, eleven hundred, repair and maintenance in buildings, so I'll talk about that a little bit. So there is a uptick in that. We had a plumbing pipe burst in December, we're actually, the insurance has just approved us, and we're getting ready to do repair work that the insurance company has given us. Well, the flooring was done in nineteen eighty-nine, I think it was, and they don't have the same floor, right? The floors no longer sold, and so we're repairing with the insurance costs, we're repairing half of a hallway and, and lobby. But obviously, we don't want to walk into a building that doesn't look good, and half of the floor is from nineteen eighty-nine, and half of the floor is from twenty-twenty-three. So this is to continue on with the repair and maintenance that starts next week. It starts next Monday on the flooring aspect of it.
What kind of square feet are you talking about?
For the current repairs or what's going to be recommended? You know, I don't have those exact numbers with me on square feet, I'd have to look, we got three quotes, we took the least amount.
So the repair is basically remove the old flooring, because it's all on top of concrete?
Yep.
And then just simply put down some new floor?
Like LVT is what's being recommended. Yep. Yep, I'll have to find out the square foot. Yep. Then, as well as repair and maintenance for equipment, so that's anything, that can be anything from radar breaks to anything basically goes down in the equipment that we have, making sure that we're getting it online. R and M vehicle, you also notice an uptick in this, and I, I spoke about this a couple weeks ago. So our repair and maintenance for vehicles, last year we spent seventy-five thousand dollars. This year, we're much less, and I'm anticipating it even lowering based on if we get vehicles approved in the budget. But what this is, is to also repair the fire vehicle that was donated to us from the fire department to make that a response vehicle, and so that's that uptick. Now, next year, you'll see this significantly decrease if, if that's approved, but that's what that uptick is for.
Do you have the number on, on that specific portion?
Yep. So. Yep. The, then you go over to technology supplies and materials. So this is one of those newer line items for us as well, so this is for computer replacement. So this is just putting, making sure that our computers, laptops, tablets, on basically a five to six-year rotation. So we wanna constantly rotate those out as they're no longer, they get antiquated. Specialty operating supplies, so basically that's SRT, fourteen thousand, right now we're at twelve-nine. We believe the fourteen thousand's a good line for this year. SWAT specialty response team. So basically, what, I'll tell you what's in that budget for this year is our, our SWAT vests are, they get expired after five years, so you're no longer supposed to use them. And so we replace some this last budget, and this is to replace the rest for the next budget, basically.
Just to answer your question, why are the five-year limitations?
It's, you know what, that's a government limitation, and it's also a manufacturer limitation. So after five years, I think the vest inside starts to break down, and so they don't believe that a bullet is the stoppage rate for a bullet, so that's basically what they do. And there is some, we do put in for some grant funding to assist us with those, because they're so expensive, but it doesn't cover all of it, right? It doesn't help us with all that expense, so that's where that comes from. Other supplies and materials, so basically this is how we operate as a law enforcement agency, thirty-eight-five. So this is our ammo, this is any less lethal weapons, anything that we need to do and operate as a law enforcement agency is basically put into this line item.
What's your volunteer cadet reserve expense?
Oh, I'm sorry, so the volunteer cadet reserve expense, so we have, and this line item's been one of those difficult line items, I, we reduced it this year. I did as much cost savings as I could with trying to add to, you'll see at the bottom line at the end that I was able to do this, but that is for cadets, for uniforms, for training expenses, for anything that we do with the cadet program, that line item comes out of there, and it's been low because we haven't had a huge amount of cadets, but we have seen an uptick, and we're hoping that that continues because we've seen some great success. We have two cadets currently that are interested in becoming law enforcement officers for our agency. So this is a good way for us to get sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds, keep them around the right path, and then maybe turn them around to become law enforcement officers with Black Mountain later on. The supplies and materials, thirty-eight-five, I kinda just went over that. Non-capital equipment and furniture, there's nothing in that line item suggested. Lease and rental equipment, right now, there's no uptick in that. Fuel, fifty-six thousand, two fifty, no uptick in that, hopefully, I think, I think we're right where we need to be with that, with, with the uptick that gas was from last year. I think it looks like we're gonna be good with that. Postage, same, five hundred dollars. Safety and compliance, this is mostly OSHA guideline things that come up throughout the year, and that's some things that we might need to do compliance-wise, so that's where that budget comes out of. Community outreach and public relations, so this is an uptick budget. I'm recommending five thousand in this, it's a slight uptick, but this is where I wanna do more in the community. This is national night out, this is the golf, this is, this is the Christmas, some different things like that. Some of the, some of the things come from donation expense, but then some come from expenses that we need to do as an agency to make sure, like, it might be, let's say we want to have pamphlets for crime that happens on computers, or elderly crime, or different things like that. These are some things that we get pamphlet-wise to help us pass out to community members, so that's what that line item is. Capital outweigh, there's nothing in there. Uh, capital outlay, there's nothing in there. Uh, miscellaneous is a hundred dollars, no, no uptick or change in that. Capital outlay, no, nothing's put in there. Capital outlay vehicles is three vehicles, two-hundred-and-two-thousand is recommended. Uh, for the three vehicles. Again, I think what you'll see and the recommendation for me over and over. Is you want to be on a seven-to-eight-year rotation. That's recommended throughout government. And what you will see is. I'm, I'm recommending that we do four-year loans. Uh, every fourth year, one loan comes off, one loan comes back on. What you'll end up, like we just sold three vehicles last week. We ended up getting eight thousand dollars is all we got out of those three vehicles because they're so aged out. They were so old, you're talking about selling twelve and thirteen-year-old vehicles. As we get to the seven and eight-year rotation, you'll see that we're gonna get somewhere around sixty thousand. So basically, it's a wash. After the fourth year, you start paying one loan with the vehicles that you're making, plus your maintenance. So. As, as we go through, you'll see those loans will probably average about fifty-five thousand dollars a year in payment. Wise is about what they'll end up being. And uh, so you'll, as a recommendation, the recommendation will be that we'll be at a loan payment. Every year of tw- two-hundred-and-twenty-five to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Over just remainder, that's the way we stay. One rotates off, one rotates on, and that way you have operating vehicles. Just like this last week, we had an officer responding to a wreck, someone rear-ended him. We're pretty sure they totaled out his vehicle. You know, this is a constant cycle, a constant thing that we're having to watch out for.
Could you please go ahead and put that? Put that on the shooter favor so that we can see. Exactly what we're talking about as compared to the past. We buy vehicles, we run them through for thirteen years, we sell this. We're now doing this loan program. Uh, because if I'm hearing correct, we're gonna have to come through with a loan program first before we get to this. One in, one out. And so that there's gonna be a pool of money that's gonna have to be put into this. In order to achieve what you're talking about. Is that, is that correct?
Basically, this would be our second year of being in it. We'd be two years away from one rotating, one rotating off. And I can, the PowerPoint that I sent or did last month, I can just send that back out uh, from what we have. Yep.
Because there's gonna have to be some money. It, it, it can't just come from just us changing. From doing twelve to thirteen to go to seven and eight, and we save sixty thousand. There's just gonna be some money put into, into the program.
Yes, yes. So it's, it's, it's an investment, yes.
Is to, is to what is that pool of investment over four years that we're gonna have to pay in addition to. Pursing the, that, that it's gonna cost.
Okay.
Costs us more money.
Right. Uh, you know, it's, it's one of those things. I don't know if it'll cost you more money. Uh, to be honest, I think it'll be a wash or less money. If you're purchasing a vehicle outright, and let's say you put it on a twelve-year cycle. And, and this is, you know, kinda repeating what I went through last, last month. But if you purchase three vehicles, you're paying one-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in cash, basically. So it's just basically, it's kinda like just doing it a different way is, is the way that it's doing it. But as I said, if you rotate vehicles out twelve years, you're getting eight thousand dollars. But if you rotate them out on eight years, you're gonna be ending up getting fifty to sixty thousand dollars. So.
But there's gotta be some upfront money.
That, that's what this is, two-hundred-and-two-thousand.
That's what I'm saying. It's, we're gonna be, so it's really eight hundred thousand? Which is what, what you're saying then?
Basically, basically, but, but it'll roll off every year. So you're gonna have one that rolls off and one that comes back on. So basically is what it ends up. Yep, yep. So exactly what format do you want me to send it? Like last?
How much money that you really think it's gonna cost us in order to get into this program?
Okay.
And so that over here to four years, we're gonna be paying in this much money. If we could sell those vehicles for sixty thousand, and how many more years is it gonna take to wash out that eight hundred thousand? Eight hundred, eight thousand, use that figure. And then, and then until we can become whole again.
Now, I don't know if you'll ever wash it out, so that'd be impossible for me to do. It's an investment that you have to do to make sure that you have your vehicles operating. So it's never gonna be a complete washout. You're always gonna invest. Every year, my recommendation is you invest two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Purchasing vehicles so that you're rotating vehicles offline on a constant basis. It'll never be a washout because you constantly have to invest. Even if you do it on a ten or twelve-year cycle, you're gonna have to invest. Right. It's just a different way to invest. And I broke that down last month, but I can send that same exact thing.
Send it because, because there's gonna have to be some upfront money that we're gonna have to put into the program. In order to achieve the seven-year cycle.
Okay, I, I'll resend what I sent last month.
Chief, how many, how many vehicles are on the fleet?
Uh, so we have twenty-seven, I think, currently right now. Is that right? Twenty-seven, and we always need three or four spares. Typically, we'll, you'll see three or four sitting at the agency. Uh, just like last week, we had the one that was. Uh, got into a wreck, and so we had to put somebody in a spare. And a lot of times throughout the year, often throughout the year, we found ourselves where we didn't have enough spares because of the maintenance. Uh, and recalls.
Do you know, do you know roughly how many of those twenty-seven are over eight years old?
So currently, I can say with the ones we just sold last week. I wanna say that we're probably at about eight to nine that are roughly over that age. And so that's kinda what I'm, what I'm trying to do is every seven to eight years. Depending on where we're at, right? Everything will be cycled. Some years we mi- might need three, some years we might need four. Based on the age, plus the maintenance, how much maintenance costs. So we constantly watch. So some of the vehicles last year, I know we paid eight thousand dollars in maintenance for, which is ridiculous, right? Because that's, that's a car payment for a year. And so we're kinda watching the age, but we also watch the maintenance cost. And then we recommend which ones are placed offline based off of both of those. So sometimes. There might be one that's. Nine years as opposed to ten years, but it had worse maintenance costs. So we're gonna offline that one quicker than we will the other, if that makes sense.
So about thirty percent of them are over eight years old. And of the ones that are under eight years, would you say that they're um, they're functioning pretty well?
Yes, absolutely. Or, as you can see, again, we went from seventy-five thousand maintenance cost. Last year to we're at twenty-five right now. And I believe that that continues to move. In fact, at my old agency, the last two agencies I've worked at that have done this. We went from, and we were basically the same, same exact make, uh, almost the exact same personnel. We went from a fifty thousand dollar maintenance cost to fifteen thousand every year. Based off of not having to sit our cars in maintenance all the time if they were old. Plus, what you don't get, which is not the number in there, is. If you don't have the vehicle and you can't operate and you have trouble finding personnel to go in cars, that's what, that's the one thing you can't measure. So.
So chief, you know what I'm gonna ask? So uh, I know that you conferred with the Weaverville Police Department because they just took delivery on two electric Ford Mustang EVs. And I'm wondering uh, what your assessment about that was.
So it's a long-winded answer. I'll try to make it short. So I've talked to Cary, North Carolina. Cary, North Carolina's been doing a nine-month study on EV vehicles. Looking at, number one, you gotta look at the infrastructure and have the infrastructure in place first. And you gotta make sure that you have quick chargers. Number two is uh, every year in Michigan is where they do the testing for police vehicles. When they test police vehicles, they. Rate them for pursuit rating. So that's, that's a whole liability thing. That's why you always see the same police cars usually on the road is because you wanna make sure that they're police rated. That means they have the proper braking, they have the proper engine, they have the proper acceleration. But then the next thing, which is really where I think that the EV vehicles. And we need to, the market's getting there, but it's not there yet. Is when the manufacturing companies that put in the plastic seats for the back. So that if somebody, I hate to say this, throws up or. Urinates all over themselves, they have a washout for those vehicles. Well, they don't make those but for specific vehicles. Same with the shotgun racks, the rifle racks, the computer racks. They make those specifically for the pollu- police-rated vehicles. Now, are they moving towards the EV? And there's getting ready to be a specific EV vehicle that's getting ready to come on the market. Twenty-twenty-four. Now, I wouldn't want the twenty-twenty-four version because we wanna get the one that we make sure is not having all the breakdowns and they fix it correctly. So my plan is to start looking at how do I do infrastructure first? Then how do I make sure the equipment, all the equipment that we put in fits into the vehicles? And then getting the right vehicle that's on the market. My recommendation will always be a hybrid, electric, gas. Because there is uh, a lot of research on attacks on electrical grids. And so we wanna make sure that we respond. I've done a lot of research on it. Uh, I think we're close. We're not there yet. I think we gotta start in steps. The first step has to be infrastructure. The second step has to be what kind of vehicle and does the manufacturer support it? Try to put a prisoner in, we have trouble putting a prisoner in back of a SUV. If we have someone in field training, we have a real problem putting them in a small vehicle in the passenger seat with the computers. Try to put them in a Tesla or a Mustang, and you're really gonna have some problems. So that's why a lot of places have moved to the SUVs. And so that's kind of where I am at that, where, where I am at with that right now. Is I don't believe we're there yet. I think these agencies are on the cutting edge, but they're gonna find out that they have a lot of problems. Uh, I personally talked to the chief for probably an hour in Cary, and they have a lot of issues. They have charging issues, batteries not lasting entire shifts. Uh, where, where are the charging stations? Are they being taken up? And so they're, they're not there. And so I'm making sure that I do my due diligence. Because when we go into this, we need to make sure that it's sustainable. And that's what I'm making sure that we do.
Well, I appreciate you doing all that research and um, having a really good answer for my question. And I appreciate that you've got it on the radar for the future. I want y'all to be safe. I want y'all to have vehicles that do the job properly. You know I want EVs, but.
Yep.
I'm not crazy. I want you to have safe, functioning vehicles.
And I do think that as we move into the ad, my first jump into this, already thinking about it, will be in the administration realm. Uh, and then as things progress for law enforcement. Cause, cause they're just behind. They're behind as far as manufacturers making the things for the EV vehicles. They just don't do it yet. So that's where we need to catch up.
Going forward, we may have to factor in high-speed charging stations just in your. You know, in your department someplace that y'all can always be charging.
Absolutely, yep. Uh, next is, this is just the debt interest. This is kinda breaking down what, what the mayor was talking about. What's the investment? Uh, you know, last year, we. We bought uh. Five vehicles, I think, and we were way behind, uh, way behind uh, last year. And the investment is a seventy-one thousand dollar loan. Now, my recommendation won't be five vehicles in the future. That's not, that's not what I'm recommending. It's three to four, depending on replacement. And that loan would be fifty-five thousand as opposed. And so that's where that comes in. And then the debt interest for, or debt and interest for the body and in-car cams. That also, that loan is seventy-one thousand. And those body cams are, or the in-car cams are coming in in three weeks, but basically we'll have every, all that equipment.
So going back to your statement there on the big, on the vehicles, you're looking at fifty-five instead of, then so that if. This more follows with your recommendation and does it really, the vehicle replacement in this course is two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars?
No, no, that would.
So let, let me say this. So this capital vehicle line, you see the two oh two, there's also a corresponding line on the revenue side for V one. So that washes. You won't start making those payments until the next budget. That's how that works. We have made no payments on any of it.
But we will be paying it though.
Well, yeah, you will be paying it. Right here, uh, mayor, is, this is the debt payment for that five-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars right here, both of these, from last year. That's your debt payment.
The five-hundred-and-eighty is what, is what was the figure?
That's correct. That was what we took out. Three hundred of that was for cars. Two eighty was for cameras, or I may have that, I may have that switched.
Two eighty was for cars, three hundred for cameras, I think is what it was.
Still, still my point following on this capital outlay here, you know, the word we're continuing, we're putting this money in, and we're still gonna get sixty-six thousand out of it. Granted, I was a major model.
I'll, I'll send you.
I'd like to be able to see that though because, because again, the public asks me these questions.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's an investment.
Have to be able to try to be explained to them as opposed to just saying, well, it works out.
No, I'll, I'll send again. I broke it down on that PowerPoint. I will resend that PowerPoint, no question about it. And it's an investment. It doesn't matter whether you purchase them outright or whether you lease them, you're making an investment. The investment is, is that you have good quality cars that are rotated out every years, that are not with high mechanical expenses. And that don't get you money on the resale value when you end up selling them at twelve years. That's basically. Yep, yep, yep.
Let's go ahead and do your other two here real quick, Steve.
So, community outreach, public relations. So basically, this is the. This is the expense, uh, my, all this line item is, comes in from donations. And then this is the expense that we take out for those donations. So this is the Thanksgiving, Christmas meals. Uh, Christmas uh, gifts that we do for the families. We were able to increase that this year. Um, as well as uh, the golf tournament, some of the expenses that come out for the golf tournament. So we take the donations, and then those are the expenses that come out of that line item. And then this is the uh. Asset forfeiture line item. Uh, this year, we're dedicating someone specifically to narcotics investigations. In the past, we've had an investigator who investigates sex crimes and. Computer crimes and whatever other crime there is, but not specifically for narcotics. We're moving a narcotics agent and some of the expenses or costs for the narcotics comes out of the asset forfeiture funds. Now, I will say that asset forfeiture funds can only be spent in certain ways. It can only be spent for like narcotics investigations, vehicles. Uh. Equipment for surveillance, different things like that. So if we go and make a drug arrest and someone has fifty thousand dollars. It goes into this asset forfeiture fund. And then those expenses have to basically go back into investing in narcotics investigation is basically what that is.
What is that total now?
We have eighty-seven thousand. Does that sound right, Tammy? I think it's somewhere in the eighty-seven thousand is what that fund is currently.
Because I know in the background I was on, there was a big bust and uh, we ended up with forty million dollars. And of course, that's been slowly been spent down. And so is that, is that, is that a reflection of that total amount or have we been adding to that?
That's what we, that's what we totally have right now. That's what we, that's what we totally have right now. What happened in the past.
Let's just say in the past year, did we get anything?
No, we did not have someone dedicated to narcotics investigation in the past year.
But I mean, but if the bust was made, we wouldn't have to have somebody dedicated to it in order to receive the funds if they, if they confiscated ten thousand dollars. That's just my question. So we didn't do any bust where we got anything.
We didn't get any money this year. No, sir. No, sir. And I think that's it.
Yeah.
So any other questions?
Yes, yeah, that is. Uh, this is an overall question that did, did, did your department and of course my department too. Uh, back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, the percentage of, of the budget was right at forty one, forty and a half for both departments of the, of the total budget. And then last year approached fifty. Is that continue gonna stay close to fifty or is it, or is it gonna increase in the, in the future? Because I mean, now we're, we're up almost ten percent from what it used to be four or five years ago as a percentage of the total budget.
I can't tell you what the increase overall of the budget. Now, I'm, I'm not aware of everybody else's budgets. The only increase I can tell you would be based on my recommendations of what our needs are. Uh, I can tell you a hundred percent without a doubt. No question, we need to increase our staffing. We need to have four per shift. Uh, that's, that's not, that's not a desire. That's a need, uh, for safety. Uh, what that brings our number up and if that increases our number, could it? Absolutely, it could increase our number. What that number is, I couldn't tell you.
And again, and again, I mean, you've done a wonderful job. I'm very proud of our police department. But then again, it, it all, it does come down sometimes to money that we're, that we're, that we're spending. And what we've done and what the report you gave last time is a great reflection of your efforts and that of your men and women. We've gone down fourteen percent in violent crime, went down forty, two, uh, twenty-four percent in property crimes. So it seems like we're moving in the right direction, uh, and it's good. I'm just, again, it just, it, it, it comes down to trying to go ahead and, and we have to find, we, this board has to find the funding.
A- absolutely.
No one questions you asking for.
Right, right.
You know, I mean, that's not a problem. Honestly, you can disagree. I'm just trying to, to get to a point where we, where do we, where do we get a limit then? To where we don't continually have these increases?
I'm, I can say just a couple of things. Number one, I, I have looked at a study that was done in twenty eighteen by the FBI. They did a staffing study and you can look it online. Uh, you can look at North Carolina compared to town, seven thousand to ten thousand. And the ones that submitted that study, we are the second lowest or worst staffed in the entire state according to that study. Uh, we also went and did what the DOJ, uh, Department of Justice with the Attorney General has an equation for, for staffing that they have. And we've done that equation and the, the recommended staffing for patrol officers. This is just for patrol officers. According to that staffing study is thirty-two, thirty-two patrol officers. I'm not asking for thirty-two patrol officers. What I am asking for is to make sure that we don't have only two working on a night or a day where we feel like that the public's in danger. And I can tell you, if we stay that way, I know we are. We need to have three per shift all the time.
And you mentioned these studies. I've looked at a couple of studies and these studies said that, you know, and this is across the nation, that staffing based upon population, so many were found. Ranges anywhere from one point six to two point four. And we go to two point four, that means we have twenty officers.
And it also says three point four total staff. So those same studies, it's, so you, yeah, you gotta do three point four. I do have, if, if, and I can put it up. Do you have it? So I wanna, I wanna make sure because I don't want it to just be my word versus your word and one person saying one thing. So if you would put that up. Okay. So a couple of things. Number one, I wanted to give everybody, this is the equation that's recommended from the North Carolina Criminal Justice Academy and the DOJ with North Carolina. And I can hand it, if y'all would hand this down, this is the equation that they give us to base off, how many staff do we need? We did that equation. It came down to thirty-two officers, patrol officers. That's their recommended. That's their lowest number, not my recommendation. This is their recommendation. Then also, if you look on the board, this is the FBI study. The FBI study was done in twenty eighteen. If you look in the gray, uh, twenty eighteen on the gray and it's up here, uh, shows the population, shows the total amount of employees, shows the total officers, total civilians. The gray part was done by the FBI and the study submitted to them. The orange part, I decided I th- thought that the board would, it would be important for the board to know plus the community on why would I be asking for more staff? Uh, do I just want them? No. Uh, do I feel it's a safety need? Absolutely. So I called along with the major, every single department and said, what's your current over the last five years, your population, and have you increased since then? And so what I find probably, you know, there's some towns you can't compare to, right? I mean, even though the population is there, do they have the same tourism as us? Maybe not. But who do we compare to? And probably who we compare to the most is Bivard and Waynesville. And if you look at Bivard, and I don't know if they have the same amount of tourism, but they're a thousand less, they have thirty-one employees. We have twenty-five. If you look at Waynesville, Waynesville, which I don't know if it's, for some reason, it didn't make it on that slide. Waynesville is at fifty-three employees. They only have a thousand more than us. There's Waynesville, fifty. Waynesville's at fifty. They, they only have a thousand more population, but yet they have twenty-five more staff members. Now, everything's based off of, you know, they're different places, different areas. So what matters? But overall, if you look at taking this manpower calculation, it says we need thirty-three patrol officers at minimum, which I'm not asking for, nor am I gonna ask for. Take this FBI study. We're one of the lowest in the state. We're not even close to a lot of them. And I say that we have some major threshold areas, Engels, Kierfert. Uh, we need to be able to respond appropriately and properly as a public safety agency and make sure that we have the proper staff. And so that's kind of what, what I got from these. A lot of the studies, the one that you're talking about, it's actually two point five in the south is what it says for officers per population. But then it says three point four with total staff, so support staff as well. So that actually puts us less than that number as well that I'm, I'm asking for. So in three different studies, three different ways, we're less. Uh, and I can say this, with or without the studies, all of them are arbitrary. They're all different, right? They all have differences. I can tell you this, as a police chief, a hundred percent that wants to run an accredited professional agency that has more and more training that we're required to do by the state, we need this extra staff. No question about it. I can say the major here had to work, just last month, he had to work sixteen hours. And our lieutenant, because we couldn't get a reserve to come in, we couldn't get anybody else to come in, he was by himself and had to work almost twenty hours straight. This is because we're required to go to more and more training. I have to send the officers to it. But yet if I only have three per shift, vacations, holidays, different things like that, that means we always got two and that's if we're fortunate. So that's, that's why that staffing recommendation's coming in.
Well, we just, we just have to understand that, I guess, that the people are gonna have to pay a lot more money.
I actually.
That's what's gonna happen. We're gonna have to pay more money, but.
I do want to go back. Can you go back to the police side here? So I wanted to say, the budget, I actually, the overall that I'm recommend, I cut a lot so that the only amount we're going up, it's recommended showing three point two is what the recommended budget last year was three, close to three one, I think is correct. So you're talking about a hundred thousand dollar difference with all the things that were recommended. I know that's a lot of money. A hundred thousand dollars is not, not a big deal. It's important. But it's not a huge increase. I'm not asking for, I took decreases in a lot of other areas to be cognitant and aware of what the citizens are paying because I want to make sure that we're being as well, I'm making sure that I'm putting a good budget forward. So no, it's not recommending a big expense. We're not looking at paying a bunch more. We're actually looking at a hundred thousand dollars difference from last year with two employees and vehicles.
Still, the only point I'm just trying to make and bring it out in this, this is a discussion on, on budget, the fact that the percentages have, 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 have gone up of the, of the total. So it's, it's one of those facts of life. We're just gonna have to, we're gonna have to pay more money.
Yep, yep. Public safety is an investment, no doubt about it.
I think it's gonna be like anything else you'll see in this budget. I mean, everything's more expensive. From your pencils to your chemicals to your gas, doesn't matter. Everything has increased across the board.
Yeah, I think gas went from like two dollars a gallon to three fifty in the last two years. It's just operating is difficult, especially without tax increases. And I know that the board doesn't want to do that. I'm not, I'm not up here saying anything about that. I'm just saying operating expenses are up tremendously. You're looking at fifteen percent minimum on operating expenses.
And again, that's your job to recommend. It's this board's job to have to figure it out. And hopefully the, the compromise between the two, uh, is something that the public can handle.
Absolutely.
So I would like to stop for today. That's okay. I think we've been in here an hour and a half. It's probably enough budget for you to chew on. Uh, you may be across that. I know I, I've been across that for weeks.
Is there any way that we can get a copy of this?
Chief, thank you.
Copy of this, of this proposed?
Yeah.
Sure. It's still a work in progress, though. Don't, don't put too much thought into the numbers yet.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else the board, any comments? Meeting adjourned.